I have 5:30 and I think we have got, we have all in attendance.
There's visual proof of the gavel. We're going to call the April 20th meeting into order now and we're doing it remotely, which is going to be a nice challenge, but we're going to get through it. And I think we've already went over this morning that if board members will raise their hand and Diane and Sandy will help me to recognize them. Before we get started, let's take a moment of silence to remember the families affected by COVID-19 and to give thanks for the many healthcare officials who remain committed to fighting this pandemic. Take just a few minutes or a few seconds for silence and then we'll have the pledge. And Diane has assured me that she's got a flag for us to use. Okay, I'll wait for the flag, Diane. All right, if you'll stand and recite the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice to draw. Thank you. Sandy, if you'll call the roll and you can do this one by alphabet or however you choose.
Yes, sir. Jessica Fogarty. Here. Sid Hill.
Here.
Amy Johnson.
Here.
Teresa Lawson.
Here.
Gigi Robinson.
Here.
Kim Usleton. Here. And Pat Welsh.
Here.
We have all in attendance.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Everyone has a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to accept it as presented, please?
This is Kim, so moved.
Sid, second.
I have a motion by Ms. Usleton and a second by Mr. Hill. Any further discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Gigi Robinson.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And Teresa.
Aye.
We have seven ayes, Chairman.
Thank you. Somewhat cumbersome, but we're going to get through this. It was definitely by lottery. I couldn't find a order anywhere there. All right. At this time, is there any individual to address the board on an agenda item or a non-agenda item? If you please unmute and if I cannot see you, please identify yourself. Okay, I don't hear anybody coming forth. So we'll go now to the Teacher of the Year Awards. Scott, are you handling this?
Yes, sir. Tallahassee City Schools, we're extremely blessed to have a system full of teachers that are dedicated to our students and their craft. Today, we're honoring a group of teachers that have been chosen by their peers as the 2019, 2020 Teacher of the Year. To me, there's no greater honor than to be recognized by your peers and coworkers. Our community is also very blessed to have an educational foundation and especially one that is as supportive as ours is. Mr. Henry, we're now at this time, recognize Mr. Henry if you would like to.
You want me to just talk for a minute?
Yes, sir.
This is Jim Henry. Appreciate that, Scott. What we're doing tonight, I don't want to step on the school systems award. It bids Teacher of the Year, but briefly, the Tullum Education Foundation was founded in 1988 by citizens that were concerned about advancing educational opportunities in Tallahassee. Since that time, we've made grants totaling over $376,000 to the city of Tallahassee, including two last week we haven't announced except to those schools, which we'll be more on later. We've made scholarships to graduating seniors of over $145,000. Then the Teacher of the Year Awards tonight will bring a total of $72,600 to be given to the teachers in the Tullum City School System. We're proud to honor the system-wide Teachers of the Year at each level. Tabitha Sehorn at the elementary school level, Cheryl Lee at the middle school level, and Dr. Samantha Stevens at the high school level. They're the epitome of what we're trying to foster and that's educational excellence. And we're proud to be able to give them a $1,000 check each. And I would normally hand that to them at this point and shake their hand. And I wish that I could do that tonight, but as they say, checks in the mail.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. And that brightened up three ladies evening, I'm sure. At this time, we'll recognize Dr. Clint Epley, Bel Air Elementary School Principal.
It's my pleasure to assist in recognizing Ms. Teresa Seaburn as Bel Air Elementary's Teacher of the Year. I've known Teresa for several years since I taught two of her children. Over the last year professionally, it's become obvious Ms. Seaburn cares deeply for her students and constantly looks for innovative instructional opportunities to reach all of her students socially, emotionally, and academically. Ms. Seaburn is a terrific educator and I'm extremely thankful she's at Bel Air. It's an honor to help in recognizing her as our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Seaburn.
Thank you very much, Dr. Epley. I appreciate the kind words.
Ms. Teresa, how long have you been at Bel Air?
Well, it depends on what you mean. I started there as a student in 1972. So, teaching-wise, I've been there since 2006.
My point being that you're one of our own, you grew up in that school, and now you're serving our students. Thank you for the job that you do with our students.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Travis Moore will now talk about Ms. Middleton from East Lincoln Elementary School.
It is my pleasure to present Cindy Middleton as the Eagle Nest Teacher of the Year. Ms. Cindy does a great job for our students, no matter what level they're at. She meets their needs and she's always three or four steps ahead of me. I think this year I went to her two or three times this year and I was like, can we get this and this? I'm already on it, Travis, so don't worry about that. I did have to give her a couple of strikes being the old baseball coach I am. She never got to that third strike, so she hung in there. But what an honor for your peers coming over. You came over from Frogland to the Nest, what, two years ago, I think, Ms. Middleton? And this is your second year at the Nest. And what a great honor for your peers to honor you with Teacher of the Year. I want to say congratulations, Ms. Middleton.
Thanks, Trav. And I think I worked a couple of those strikes off.
I agree with that.
Ms. Middleton, you do a super job with our kids and you have for a long time. You're also a Tallahassee native and I know you do a great job because you had both of mine. And I know what you did for our children, for my children personally. Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Debbie Edens is the principal of Jack T. Fair and she'll be talking about their Teacher of the Year.
Okay, hello, everyone. It's my honor to introduce Ms. Angie Coop to you. She's a second grade teacher at Farrah Elementary. And just as Ms. Middleton went from the pond over to Eagles Nest, Ms. Coop came from the Eagles Nest over to the pond, so we travel around. But she is known for her positive attitude, her strong relationships with her parents, students, and peers, and also her creative teaching style. So congratulations, Ms. Coop. It sure is an honor to work with you.
Thank you.
Angie, you do such a terrific job and you reach a lot of kids that are sometimes not really easy to reach. And we appreciate everything that you're doing over at Farrah and for our kids in our school system. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Harker.
You're very welcome. All right, Dr. Wood. Oh, excuse me. I have Ms. Mary Gilbert, Robert E. Lee Elementary School.
Well, I'm excited to be here tonight. It is such an honor to introduce you all to Tabitha Sehorn, who is Robert E. Lee's Teacher of the Year, but also the Tallahassee City Schools District Level Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations, Tabitha, and congratulations to all the other Teachers of the Year. But this is a special honor for me because I've known Tabitha a long time and had the privilege. She was at Robert E. Lee when I was a special teacher. So I got to see her as a young child growing up, an outstanding student then, then went on to middle school at East Middle to Tallahassee High School. And she is just a role model. She exemplifies everything you would want for a teacher to model and to become. But as I think about that, Tabitha's had 11 years in Tallahassee City Schools and at Robert E. Lee. And you know, we think about teachers that just truly exemplify all the characteristics of a great teacher. But first and foremost, what stands out with me, with Tabitha, is that she is a servant's leader. She has an incredible heart and love and a passion that drives her. And that's what we see with all of her students and our families and our community, her colleagues. And so, Tabitha, you have so many wonderful things, but I personally appreciate your love for our students, your Robert E. Lee family community. And it's just such an honor and privilege to have a former student, someone that went through Tallahassee City Schools, this exemplary school system. And now we get to see you as Robert E. Lee's Teacher of the Year, Tallahassee District Teacher of the Year. And wow, congratulations. It is an honor. We love you and we thank you for everything you're doing for our students. Great, great person in this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I appreciate that. You're going to make me cry.
Tabitha, you also overcame your Royal Geography teacher at Tallahassee High School, which was moi. I'm proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome. Next is Dr. Woody Dillahay with East Middle School.
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate all of our Tallahassee Teachers of the Year. From East Middle School, we have Katie Hayes. She's a sixth grade ELA teacher. She's currently in her fifth year at East Middle School, Tennessee Tech graduate. Katie is always willing to help. She's always positive. She's a leader in our school building and she truly loves the students that she comes into contact with each day. I'm excited for and proud of Ms. Katie Hayes, East Middle School Teacher of the Year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dillahay.
Katie, you're also overcome, overcame your Royal Geography teacher. Very proud of you guys that's grown up, especially you guys that have grown up in our system and are now doing great things on the other end of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Ms. Cindy Herrera will be talking about West Middle School's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor to present Ms. Cheryl Lee. She's not originally from Tallahassee, but she's from East Tennessee. And I had the pleasure of interviewing her from Japan. And that was my first Google meet. And I'm interviewing a person who's interested in moving from Japan to Tallahassee, Tennessee to teach ELA in eighth grade. As I talked to her and Dr. Cheryl, as we talked to her, we realized right off the top she was going to be a young lady who's very innovative. She's very creative. She's very passionate. You could hear in her voice the passion she had for her kids, the passion that she had working with her teachers, the passion for the language, teaching language. And the thing is, when Ms. Lee came and made a choice to come to Tallahassee, Tennessee, which I was so excited about, she brought all that to West Middle School. And she's never slowed down. In fact, the eighth grade teachers call her the beast. And if you're around her enough, you would not put that with her because she's very quiet. But she does so many things to get major events and activities and opportunities here at West completed. She's an amazing language arts teacher. Whenever I go in there, I plan on going there for 10 or 15 minutes and I end up staying 30 and longer. She's just a phenomenal person. She's an amazing teacher. And I'm very thankful that she's at West Middle School. I'd also like to congratulate her that not only she's our West Middle School Teacher of the Year, she's the middle school teacher for Tallahassee City Schools, but she's also representing us in the region. So congratulations, Ms. Lee. We're thankful that you're at West. We're thankful you're in Tallahassee City Schools and we're happy that you received this honor.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl, thank you for what you do. You obviously have jumped right in here in Tallahassee and done a great job. The, Ms. Herrera kind of stole some of the thunder from Japan on me. But hey, congratulations and you're going to represent us. You're one of 27 that are moving on to the regional. Thank you for what you do for the Bobcat Land over there.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have Ms. Rose from Tallahassee High School, and I believe she has three folks to talk about.
Yes, I do. Thank you. And I would like to step off for a moment and tell Katie Hayes, I'm glad I didn't discourage her from the teaching of English when she was in my English class. So I always feel good when I did not run someone off from the profession.
You were wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. You were a great student. It was a pleasure. We have three teachers at Tallahassee High School who have been recognized and all three of them are Tallahassee transplants. We pride ourselves on the fact that we steal talent from anybody we can steal it from. And that was certainly the case with these three. And I would like to start with Ms. Lisa Lee. Okay, well, I can start with Dr. Stevens. Dr. Stevens is on there. That's good. Okay, all these faces are popping up. Okay, going back to Lisa Lee again, all right? Lisa Lee came to us from our neighbors over in Moore County. She walked in the door one day when we were just absolutely wondering, what are we going to do about a science teacher? And Travis Moore and I interviewed her and there wasn't anything we asked her about that she didn't say, yeah, yeah, I think I could do that. And in the time she has been with us, she has proven that, yep, she can do it and she can do it really, really well. The most recent achievement, the most recent task that she's taken on for us is developing our STEM program as part of our CTE program. We went to her at the beginning of this year and said, look, we got this idea. We don't know exactly how it's going to work out, but we got these kids and we want to match them up with some middle school kids. Can you do this? And in true Lisa Lee fish, and she says, yeah, I think I can do that. And she did do it and she did it quite well. And Lisa, we're very, very fortunate to have you at Tallahassee High School. You're welcome. Chris Morris did not realize when he married Whitney Darlington that he was marrying an entire community. And we are very happy to have him with us. He has worked very hard to build an environmental science program that has definitely engaged our students. He is another one of those individuals who says, anytime you go to him with an idea, yeah, yeah, I think we can do that. And he does it and does it well. Kids are clamoring to get into his classroom. During this COVID outbreak, he has really shown himself to be a beast as far as tackling the technology portion of this. He's got his own little virtual classroom set up and he's, you know, I really thought about building that solar oven and trying to make myself some s'mores this weekend, but I didn't have any marshmallows, so I didn't try it. But he's been sending out some wonderful ideas. It just reinforces. His peers made an excellent choice. And I've kind of got him and Lisa grouped together because I've got a little story I want to tell you. It was either late January or early February. I can't put a date on it, but I know this. It was very, very dark and it was very, very cold. At 4:45 on a Saturday morning, my phone rang and it was dispatch telling me that they had a burglar alarm. The sensor had gone off in the building at the high school. And when that happens, the only choice you have is to go over there and let the police in because you have to go in and turn the alarm off. So I get up, I get dressed, I go, and it's cold. And I go over there and I'm going to move in this building. I mean, I'm going to suspend them. They're never going to walk at graduation. I was just going through the ceiling. And as I leave, there's one car parked out in the student parking lot and there's a student sitting in it. And I pulled up next to him and I said, what are you doing out here at 5 o'clock in the morning? He said, oh, I'm meeting Ms. Lee and Mr. Morris. We're going to the Science Olympiad today. I thought, man, how lucky am I to work at a school where we have teachers who will roll out before 5 o'clock on a cold Saturday morning and see that kids get to compete in a Science Olympiad? And they did well, too. And I want to, I want to thank you. I just, I just want you to know that personally, I look at y'all and I think, my hires, yes, congratulations. I'm so proud of you. This was definitely an honor that you deserve. Mr. Hargrove, do you want to talk with them now and then let me move to Dr. Stevens? Or you want to do a three up, three down?
That's fine. Chris and Ms. Lisa, we appreciate the job that you do in our classrooms every day. And the school day for Teacher of the Year, sometimes it goes way beyond the hour 3:15. And thank you for the impact that both you all have on our, on our students and in our high school. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And our third Teacher of the Year at Tallahassee High School is Dr. Samantha Stevens. Dr. Stevens, it was a great day for us when Dr. Stevens decided to come over the mountain and join us from Grundy County. She has done an exceptional job in our math department. And she teaches a huge spectrum. She goes from teaching a first period class that is an Algebra II inclusion class to second period, which is an AP BC calculus class. And if you don't think that takes some shifting of gears to do, let me tell you, that's a leap right there. We have a banner in our lobby that recognizes Tallahassee High School as a reward school. And the, the main reason we achieve that status is because of our growth in our Algebra II scores the previous year. And Samantha Stevens did an awful lot of the heavy lifting to see that happen for us. We are so fortunate to have her on our staff. We are, and we are doubly blessed and excited for her because Dr. Stevens also is moving on in the regional competition. And I just have no doubt that sometime in the near future, when people get to sit down at a table together again, I'm going to be sitting at a table where she's going to be recognized at the next level. She's just that good. Samantha, congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Rose. I greatly appreciate being a member of the Tallahassee High School faculty. Thank you again.
Pleasure is ours.
Dr. Stevens, have you ever read the starfish poem?
I have not.
Well, anyway, I'll read it to you sometimes, some other time. But I really appreciate the difference that you make and all our students and my starfish, the impact that you've made on one of my personal starfish. But I'll share that with you sometimes and we're awfully proud to have you as part of our, our staff here at Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Pat?
That was incredible. I want to thank each award winner and each principal and you, Mr. Hargrove. That was a great presentation. This normally, we have a normal meeting. It's one of the highlights of the year and each of y'all have made a real effort to make it special again. And to know we've got a director of schools that was almost ready to recite poetry. I'm really impressed.
Thank you, Mr. Pat.
All right. Let's go to the Holland scholarships. Jim, I've got something to say eventually here, but why don't you go ahead and start off?
Well, I don't know that there's that much for me to say, except that I think we're supposed to formally recommend to you that you approve the scholarship, the scholarships we've decided to present this year. We met last week for several hours and the committee presented, I want to say somewhere around $18,000 worth. The total amount by the Holland Scholarship, of the original $400,000 left into trust by John Holland in 1978, we've now given away somewhere between $1.1 or $1.2 million out of that $400,000. So it's been a tremendous thank to the city of Tallahassee and its students. But we just want to, I think officially, we're supposed to request the board's approval to make the scholarships that we have presented to you and they should be in your packets.
They are. And the, I would assume that we're expected to get a motion to approve the amount of money that's being spent also at $16,250 this year. And the total that the Holland Scholarship is funded now is $1.135 and $300 worth of scholarships since, did you say 78, Jim?
Yeah, roughly 78.
We're awful indebted to John Holland, who is a member of the Ennis family and a member of the Coca-Cola Ballin in Tallahassee for a long, long time. Do we have, I see Amy's wanting to make a motion. Amy, go ahead, please.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we accept the list of students that we have been given for the Holland Scholarship awards and for the amount that has been outlined. Is it okay to put both of those things in one motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's the motion I make.
And I want to emphasize again, it's not our money. We're okay in the scholarship to go to these students. Do we have a second? All right, Teresa, I'm going to, your hands up. Go ahead, Teresa.
I can get this off.
Yeah, I got you. So the motion is made by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Ms. Lawson. Is there any other discussion about the Holland Scholarship Award winners? And remember, this list remains confidential, I believe, to the middle of May. Wait till somebody else tells you before we release any of the names. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Vaughn.
Sure. Jessica Fogarty? Jessica, you there? Jessica, what is your vote?
Yes, I voted yes.
Thank you. Gigi?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sid?
Yes.
We have seven in favor, Chairman Welsh.
Thank you. Ms. Usleton, you timed your mute button perfectly then. You were concerned about that earlier today. All right, the next piece of the business is the consent agenda, which is the month, this week or this month is only the minutes. Everyone has a copy of the minutes. And Ms. Vaughn, I'd like to make sure that we note at the end of the minutes, sprinkled was a commendation for Mr. Hargrove's hard work in that month. Coming up to that, and it continues on, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, which is the minutes?
So moved.
Is that by Kim? Who made the, okay, Ms. Lawson made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second, by Gigi.
Thank you, Gigi. Second by Gigi. Any further discussion? If you're in favor of the motion to accept the consent agenda, which is the minutes, please call the roll, Ms. Vaughn.
Sure. Kim Usleton? Yes. Pat Welsh?
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty?
Yes.
Sid Hill?
Yes.
And Amy Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven in favor, Chairman Welsh.
Thank you. That brings us into the next, to the unfinished business and the first. Thank you. That brings us into the next, to the unfinished business. And the first report is building and grounds. The committee met on 4/14. Um, Teresa, if you and Sid, if, if, if y'all see something that needs to be added or corrected, if you'll take notes, I've, I've got kind of a long report today, which is, which is good. The, um, after our meeting, I went by East, cause we had, East Middle, which we had talked about in the meeting, about getting close to the end of the work by the contractor, who was Lee Cole. He has done, he and Dr. Dillahay have done a great job sprucing the, the building up. They have now painted, uh, all, all areas of the school, I believe. Uh, the wood panels behind the library that were really unsightly have been completely improved. There's support columns that are near those, that they're gonna soon be dressed out to match those. There was a horrible set of vents that were visible from outside near the, the dumpster area. Those have been, uh, replaced. There were a whole lot of air return grills that looked horrible inside the building. Those are all been done. They have just done a great job over there. And I would encourage any board member that hadn't had a chance to look at it to call Dr. Dillahay and make a time to go by there and look at it. I'm, I'm really proud of, of, of the investment we've made over there. Uh, the administration building, the refurbishing part, uh, one of the rains that happened recently during a board meeting, uh, let several members, including myself, realize that there was a need for awning out front. And the, uh, the, the, we had two, two possibilities. We could have a canvas awning or a metal awning. The metal is a little bit cheaper and it will last a whole lot longer. And that was our, uh, asked Jason to go ahead and authorize that. The committee, uh, today will, will be recommending, uh, for us to slip, accept the flooring bid for Mills Flooring for $19,590, and that will replace all the carpet in the, uh, in the building and the tile in the front area. Factory Furniture has provided a, uh, a, a bid to completely replace the furniture in the, in the administration building, which is extremely old. And, uh, we have, we've got some financial questions to answer later on. The finance committee will meet in a, in about a week to deal with what we, what may be, uh, shortfalls with the COVID-19 problems. However, it's our recommendation to, to go ahead and, and use part of the bid, and that would be in the first wave here to spend $18,466 on the furniture in the front and also in the superintendent's office, where we wanna make, in both of those places, we wanna make a good first impression. We had a long discussion about ceiling tile in the boardroom. And after, if somebody has questions later on, I, I hope you'd reach out to a committee member because we cover just about every kind of scenario that would have been possible there. The maintenance group and, uh, Tim Jensen's people have done a great job. If you'll come by, all the ceiling tile and the surrounding offices have, have, I believe, either been replaced or they soon will be. And the, the difference is incredible. The, uh, what we, what we finally decided to do in the, the boardroom is to drop the ceiling about, I'm guessing about eight to 12 inches. And there is some block dentil work that I can't describe, but, and, and you probably not gonna understand without going back, coming by and, uh, to the administration building and take a look at that. And also to put, uh, LED fixtures in it. That, I think, is gonna make a big difference in the appearance there. Um, we also talked about the parking lot behind to the, to the right side of the building as you're facing the building between us and the, uh, old USO, uh, building. And also the, the area where there's several buses have been, uh, parked for some time, about paving that. At one time, we were trying to work, deal with the city, but the city has, has told us that there's no money left in the bond funding and we're, we'll have to be on our own if we do that. And Jason is, uh, talking to paving contractors to, to try to get a set of specs up and also to make sure that's exactly what we wanna end up doing. We've got a lot of expensive capital projects on the board. One, of course, is the track resurfacing. There's also some drainage questions that are involved with that now that we, with, the committee will have to address, uh, in the next subsequent meeting. Ceiling tile replacement needs to be done at East Middle, Bel Air and THS, and that, they are expensive. We also have the tennis courts in the remaining furniture in the administration building. The finance committee will meet soon to, to look at Jason's estimate for revenue now that he's, he soon will have or already has some of the state's current BEP numbers, which were better than we thought they might be. But we know we're gonna have a, a, a nice sales cut hit. And we don't wanna, we, we realize we're gonna have to get into the fund balance for capital non-recurring expenditures the next budget year. But we don't wanna get in there so deep that we've, we've hurt ourselves cash flow in the, in the, uh, future. Um, that's a, a pretty lengthy meeting or a report there. Are there any report, uh, corrections or questions from Sid and Teresa, especially but any board member? Kim? Go ahead.
At our, at our last meeting, or maybe it was the study session, we spoke about, um, the work that going ahead and being done at THS on the track. Um, was there any consideration? And then I've, I've got another one, too. Let me ask you the other one while I'm there. Um, I know that we don't know our full financial situation yet, but, but I'm gonna be, um, a cheerleader for, uh, finishing the boardroom. Um, I believe that that room is the room that is used and seen by most of the community. We invite people in for receptions. And, and I understand not being able to do the whole building, and I love what y'all have chosen, um, as far as the entry in the, in the office. But I really and truly feel like we are making a big mistake by not going ahead and doing that. It really, that is where we invite most of our people into, and it is, how, how many years has it been since anything has been done to that room? And finding comfortable seating and, and the, the chairs, like, I have to sit on my legs to, to be able to reach the thing, cause I look like I'm like this. And I just, and not just for me. I mean, I'm fine sitting on my legs. I'm sitting on my legs right now. But I think that we do need to really consider, um, making that room look more like we want it to. And it, it's not just about the look. It's about the, the utility of it. It's about how we use it and how the community also uses it. So those are just my two things.
I, I agree with, go ahead, Amy, then I'll comment. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay. Um, I would agree also that, uh, the boardroom needs primary consideration. Um, to me, that's one, and, uh, director's office is two. Um, I'm all for the flooring as well. Uh, the, the foyer. Uh, I mean, we've got our, our new door and, uh, the foyer is the least of my concerns. We don't see people sitting around in there anymore. I mean, everybody comes in and, you know, then moves on into the rest of the building. So, um, to me, that's not a primary point, but I do agree with Kim. Um, we've all, we have wrestled with those chairs for years. And, uh, we need better chairs if, we just need to work in the boardroom.
I, I, I agree with, I agree with all the comments. The, um, they would, particularly, I, I think the, that, that, that May could be called out a little bit is if we decided to, to, um, to, to do what we're recommending to do and at the cost of more when we do the, the difference. But factory furniture was nice enough to be able to split this up and not charge us extra for the other. The, the total cost will still stay the same. And I, I think we got, I, 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 it's my great desire to do all these projects, and I'm not too sure that we can't. But I also, we've got a fiduciary duty, uh, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a little bit of hit because of COVID. And we just need to make a little bit, a little bit wiser assessment on the budget, which we didn't, we did not have at that time. But we are, Kim, you'll be getting a call soon to, to have a finance meeting, which you saw from emails today. And we'll, and we'll, I, 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 I would hope, I would certainly hope that we would continue on, especially in the boardroom. But, uh, there's visitors, you know, all the time in Susan Fanning's office and Jason's office. And, and, uh, I hope that we're able to do it all. Any, any other question? I'm, we're, that we won't be, I won't, look, we're not looking for a motion right now, but we will before the, the meeting's over with on some of those items. Gigi, go ahead.
Yes. What about the track? I know Kim asked that at the beginning. Um, yeah, now we've already approved the money for that. Do we have a time?
We've got, we've, we've got some drainage issues that we have had in the past, that, that the committee has, has not been aware of until just recently. And Coach Olive has brought them forth to us. There's already been a whole lot of, uh, work done as far as the installation of, in the past. And a lot of issues that I'd rather not speak in great detail because the committee members have not heard it. And it's gonna get done in the, the next budget cycle, which we anticipated originally.
Okay.
That's gonna be one of the ones that we can't put off. Uh, if the, the, if the track's not fixed and the drainage is not fixed at the same time, we're starting, we're gonna lose the base of the track, which is the, the expensive part. We don't have to start from the very beginning. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna discuss the tiles, the ceiling tiles?
The, they're, I, I'm, I'm sorry. That's another thing that's on, that should be on that list of things we're gonna do in the past, in the future. We've got a bid from All Interior. Is that what you're talking about, Teresa? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the tiles, I think it was Bel Air.
Bel Air, East Middle and the High School. They are, they're expensive. Uh, and, and I don't wanna get the money to, to talk about the month, the, the ultimate part of it tonight. But I would anticipate that we'd be able to get East Middle and Bel Air first. The High School is really, really expensive, and I'm not too sure it needs to be done, uh, in a, a, a bigger effort for total part of the building that would probably be tied to Sales Tax Sinking Fund when we have, when those, those funds become available. But, um,
I couldn't remember if we were supposed to talk about that, but I know that Bel Air and East Middle, uh, is, is in desperate need.
Yes, in both of those buildings. Now that we've, especially, especially just recently fixed up, uh, East Middle, uh, it will, that building will look almost new.
It will. It'll make all the difference. And in Bel Air, too.
That, that's on that list that, that finance.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. It's a good question. Anybody else? Okay, thank y'all. Let's get to the next then. All right. Scott, who's working on the policy adoptions?
Um, I think we moved past Jason on the budget.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Jason?
Hello, everybody. Uh, we did receive our first estimate from the state for our BEP funding for next school year. Uh, we were pleasantly surprised with that number. Uh, we are working with the city and the county to get, uh, best guess on, uh, property tax and sales tax estimates for the coming year. Um, we are attempting to schedule a budget and finance committee within the next week uh, in order to try to get some first-run numbers for you board members to begin looking at, uh, in hopes for the May, uh, study session, the first, uh, Monday, Monday of May.
Follow-up questions or comments for Jason, please? All right. Now, Scott, I'm sorry.
Uh, this, as far as a policy adoption, um, due to the COVID-19 closure, the TSBA had recommended policy changes. Uh, we looked at these during April's study session, and Mr. Miller has reviewed them. And I am, uh, presenting, presenting them for your approval.
All right, the, um, we've got, the, the, these are, these are not resolutions one and two. Is that correct?
These are the, there are two policies, 5.3 and 5.1, and you see the others, and then the policy 1.8. These are emergency closing, uh, employee designations during emergency closure, telework during emergencies, and leave.
Okay. Any follow-up questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt these.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second by Amy.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any follow-up questions? If not, please call the role of Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, sir. Pat Welsh?
Yes.
Sid Hill?
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty?
Yes.
Teresa Lawson?
Yes.
And Kim Usleton?
Yes. We have all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, the next is policy adoption of, of 6.204, which is gonna help in the collecting.
That's me.
Okay, go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry. Amy, your mute's back on. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, did Clifton wanna say something, or, or am I just gonna say the? I forget what we decided about. Let me just explain.
Dr. Duncan's there, too.
Yeah. Um, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and talk. The, the current wording that we have in the, um, in 6.204 in our manuals does not have the teeth to make tuition payment a priority. And so we have provided, um, we are proposing new wording, which has been approved by Mr. Miller. And I'm going to read the sentence to you. You all should, you have copies. You have received copies. But anyway, what it says is, "If complete tuition payment is not received by the end of April of the year in which the student or students attend a school in the TCS system, the students shall be excluded from attendance in the subsequent school years, year or years, until all prior and current tuition is paid in full." And, um, the purpose of this is just to make it clear that, uh, you're not supposed to lag on paying tuition. It is supposed to be done within the school year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions or follow-up? This is gonna make Ms., Ms., or Dr. Duncan's job a whole lot easier, I believe. If there's no other questions or comments, I'd, will entertain a motion to accept uh, policy 6.204 as presented.
Some move.
I think I got a motion by, by Ms. Usleton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fogarty. We're getting, we're getting there. Any, any further comments? If not, please call the role of Ms. Vaughn.
Gigi Robinson?
Aye.
Sid Hill?
Aye.
Amy Johnson?
Aye.
Teresa Lawson?
Aye.
And Chairman Welsh?
Aye.
Very good. All in favor?
Thank you. All right, that's submitted a second piece of paper here. Next is new business, which is the tuition rates. Mr. Hargrove?
Um, as the policy states, students that are residing outside of our city limits of the school system may attend our school system, um, under the condition that they pay tuition. There are two, uh, recommendations here. High school tuition will remain at $900 a year. Middle school will remain at $600 a year. And the elementary tuition remain at $300 a year with multi, uh, student discount up to the third child. Um, also tuition will be discounted at a 50% rate for non-residents, but our Tullahoma City voters. And for employees of city rate for non-residents, but our Tullahoma City voters and for employees of city of Tullahoma.
Which is how it's been, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2021 tuition rates as recommended by staff.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Lawson. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? In the absence of Ms. Vaughn.
Jessica Fogarty. Jessica, you there? I'm afraid we might have lost Jessica. Oh, thank you. Sid Hill.
Yes.
Amy Johnson.
Yes.
Chairman Welsh.
Yes.
And Kim Ussleton.
Yes.
We have all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Teacher tenure. Scott, and I appreciate, uh, I'm not sure that we had the principal comments like we've got this time. Go ahead, please.
Yes, sir. I've shared our principals' recommendations and comments, as you just spoke of, with uh with all of you for your review, and we are recommending 11 teachers for tenure. Uh, Bel Air, Andrea Beth Ray from the Community Service Building, Ms. Rivers Brown. East Middle School, Amy Johnson, not to be confused with our board's Amy Johnson. Uh, Fair Elementary, Ms. Kim Brooks and Mallory Taylor. Robert E. Lee, Brittany Cleveland, Caitlin Curly, Danae Greenwood and Ms. Mary Wright. Tullahoma High School, Ms. Lisa Burden, and West Middle School, Caitlin Wilson.
Any question or comments of recommendation for tenure? If not, I'll entertain a motion to to accept the administration's recommendation.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
By Ms. Uss.
Second by Amy.
Any further discussion? If not, please call the role of Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, sir. Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Gigi Robinson.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
And Chairman Welsh.
Yes.
We have all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, now, policy resolution, Scott, on uh emergency suspension of of the board policies.
Yes, sir. These policies all deal with the closure due to the COVID-19. And uh, go ahead, Clifton.
Uh, Chairman Clifton Miller.
Uh. Yes, sir.
Resolution number two was a recommendation from TSBA uh uh asking boards to waive or suspend certain um policies uh in light of COVID and the the resulting closures. Um, uh, Mr. Hargrove and I have spent the last, I guess, about week reviewing uh grading systems, graduation requirements, and uh testing evaluations, et cetera, uh, to make sure that uh this resolution has been tailored for this particular system. If you look at it in detail, you'll see there's been many changes from the form that TSBA sent to us. So, well, this is uh based on uh mine and Mr. Hargrove's work, uh, we believe that these are the waivers that are necessary for Tullahoma City School System uh to graduate seniors and move uh other students from one uh grade level to the next in light of our uh school closure problems.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And and um, the one section of that that's maybe the biggest difference from the state's recommendations would be the amount of credits. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Which should be, we're going to, we're going to use 22, which is.
We're going to recommend 22, and the state minimum is uh is 20.
Mr. Miller, should I get a a motion and a vote on both resolutions separately or together?
Uh, separately.
Okay. Would you go over Resolution One, basically what we're doing there, please?
Under Resolution uh number one, this is the uh resolution for the closure of uh schools for the remainder of the year. Uh, the resolution um uh kind of details uh many of the executive orders that have gone down since early March and uh include the last um uh recommendation by the governor on April the 15th that all schools, public and private in Tennessee, uh remain closed through the end of this school year. So based on that recommendation, uh, the resolution provides that uh we will close uh Tullahoma City School Systems through the a remainder of the 2019, 2020 school year.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Mr. Miller? If not, I'll entertain a motion uh to accept Resolution One presented.
This is Amy. So moved.
We've got a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Well, Gigi, I'll have you know that you got your hand up first, but Ms. Ussland had the first voice. So I'm I'm gonna go with Ms. Ussland this time.
That's good.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments? In the absence of Ms. Vaughn, would you please call the role on Resolution One?
Yes, sir. Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Chairman Welsh.
Yes.
Gigi Robinson.
Yes.
And Sid Hill.
Yes.
We have all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you.
Saying you said Resolution One is under new business for action.
All right, uh, and then I'll entertain a motion on Resolution Two. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any further comments or questions? In the absence of Ms. Vaughn, please call the role.
Yes, sir. Chairman Welsh.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes, it takes a while for mine to. I'm sorry.
Everybody's fine.
Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Kim Ussleton.
Yes.
And Amy Johnson.
Yes.
We have all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you. Um, I've got a um, some help that somebody just said that that Resolution One was supposed to have been a new business. If I've, if I've got this out of order, uh, Clifton?
I know. I don't think there's any problem there.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to Central Office Flooring. And again, if from the report, we're, we're want to go ahead, there's no penalty for dividing the contract. Uh, if we want to go ahead and finish it, the uh the first mark amount from 19,591 for the Central Office. Is there a motion to accept that prize? Motion by Ms.
So moved.
Motion.
Second, Sid.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Ussland and a second by Mr. Hill. Any further discussion? If not, please call the role of Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, sir. Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Teresa Lawson.
Yes.
Amy Johnson.
Yes.
Chairman Welsh.
Yes.
And Gigi Robinson.
Yes.
We have all in favor, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, and the next action item brings us to the Central Office Furniture. And again, that bid from Factory Furniture was 18,466. And uh, I was incorrect. We're doing all of of the floor covering bid. The the gracious uh offer from Factory Furniture was we could divide this with no penalty when we come back to finish. Is there a motion to accept Factory Furniture bid of 18,466?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion or comment? If not, Ms. Vaughn, perform the duty, please.
Yes, sir. Jessica Fogarty.
Yes.
Sid Hill.
Yes.
Chairman Welsh.
Yes.
Kim Ussleton.
Yes.
And Amy Johnson.
No.
We have six in favor and one opposed, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next item was the school closure, but Mr. Miller has ruled that acceptable, that we've already, that we've already acted on that. So, Mr. Hargrove, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Um, as far as distance learning, the continuation of of that, um, we are continuing uh producing learning bundles for our students. Our schools and our tech team are finalizing the plans for retrieving devices here in the next few weeks as school wraps up. Uh, we'll also be returning school items left at school on May 8th. Uh, our principals will be reaching out to their parent for end of year and housekeeping information. Our food nutrition team will continue to feed our our students on a current schedule that they're running through May 22nd. And then after that, they will begin a summer feeding plan that will come. Um, Chairman and Board, you know, last week Governor Lee recommended schools remain closed through the rest of the school year. And to be quite frank about it, I'm not disagreeing with his decision. But when he rendered the decision, it was kind of a kick in the gut for me. Um, sad in my heart. I understand, um, I am saddened deeply for our students. Um, I'm saddened for our parents. I'm saddened for our teachers. I'm saddened for our athletes, our coaches, and our administrators, but I'm especially saddened for our seniors. Um, the lessons that I I've learned, our and learning out of this, don't take things for granted. Uh, we miss our folks, and hopefully they miss some of us, and I miss seeing some of y'all. Um, tough times don't last and tough people do. Uh, please pray for that we continue to to be resilient and encouraged because there are brighter days ahead, uh, and especially for the class of 2020, and that goes for the rest of us. Um, just, just pray for it. It's it's kind of tough. It's, it hurt me a little bit when I started thinking about, hey, that, you know, not not returning to normal and and what our kids are missing, and we miss them as well. So at this time, I like, is Ms. Rupa on?
Yes, I am. Can you see me?
There's Ms. Rupa Blackwell. She's our TD Board Liaison. Talk to us, Ms. Rupa.
Well, I want to start off by saying thank you to all of y'all and to the as you guys know, I have a kid in the school system, and I cannot imagine what your jobs are like right now, what you're doing, because um they, teaching is difficult, um, and I'm very thankful for the packets that we're getting. So we're really able to quickly um deal with this situation and and move this forward, which is awesome. And nothing, you know, I expect nothing less from Tullahoma City School System, uh, but wow, that's, that's the one thing I want to say. Um, another thing I want to keep you guys up to date on is the road paving in our downtown is almost done, which is very exciting. Um, we are doing some last punch list items this week, but um it should be done very, very soon. Uh, we're also, the other things I was going to mention, if there's anything else major other than one last thing that y'all have been clearly talking about, as is, um, just that, you know, as our city is looking at what we can and can't do with what's happening with the economic ramifications of COVID-19, um, I know that you guys are thinking in the same way. We're looking at, you know, how we can contain our costs, reduce our expenditures, um, because we're looking at a, you know, pretty major major economic hit here. So um, I just want to thank you guys. Very clear that you guys have some due diligence in this conversation, just like we are, and I'm just so appreciative to have you all here. So thank you.
Thank you, Rupa. Scott, I appreciate your comments. Are you finished? The uh, the ball, or at least the the first part of your comments concerned our our mode of instruction presently. And I don't know that we've, I've we've had any email conversation amongst members or uh between uh board members and staff recently that didn't, that that topic didn't come up. And I would hope that um, the next study session, that we've got plenty of time put forth, and I know that the staff is working. You know, Jessica, I had questions, primary questions of how many kids are we, we're checking on? Or have we found every one of them? And how are we doing? Um, I'd like to know, uh, you know, what's, are we, are right now, are we teaching new subject? Are we reviewing? I I think the board would like a a nice assessment of where we are right now and where we might be going and uh in the, and knowing that they make, that could change the following day and uh.
Well, I I have a lot more details that have been shared with me, uh, our leadership team that we've developed. But I I I don't want anybody to get anything confused. Our principals will be communicating those uh intentions uh with their, with their parents of their students, and uh sometimes less is more, but I I will definitely have a much more.
Healthy discussion on that.
Yes, sir.
Please. Any other comments for Mr. Hargrove? Go ahead.
I just have a comment. I wanted to um thank Sandy for really running this meeting. I think she did an exceptional job. We're all learning how to do this, and I just appreciate her professionalism and the way that she um handled the meeting. I wanted to thank you, Pat, for the work that you did and um Scott Hargrove um in preparing for this meeting, and also our tech department.
Yes.
You are, you're working with a lot of real novices here, so um I just, you know, appreciate the effort that everyone went to um for us to be able to have this meeting, which is very important. So thank you very much.
Ms. Sudbury and uh Ms. Doughton had had worked overtime on this. They they put plenty of work in this morning.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I I've already sent an email to you. I know, as I said earlier, we have some parents who are um, we're all in the struggle together, and they're just wondering about how and what we will do with the summer program. So I promised them I'd make that reference in this meeting. I know we're going to talk about later in the study session.
Uh, he's referring to cool kids, Mr. Hargrove.
It's great you brought that up. Uh, Ms. Chastain and I have been in communication on that today. And uh, so there there's a plan in place, and hopefully in the next few days, uh, we'll be able to share that plan.
Scott, I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Very welcome. Hey, folks need to know.
I was, you uh reached out to me, Sid, and and uh, that that was kind of incredible, because two hours previous, I'd seen it on his board behind his, behind his desk, that same topic. Anybody else? I I appreciate everybody. The patience we had tonight was great. You know, it it's, it's kind of unnerving when you want to get a comment back and you have to punch the button about six times and realize you're mutant and unmutant at the same time. I've got several things for you to sign, and I'll get back with you, Teresa. It may take me a half hour, though, to get all the paperwork off this desk.
That's a problem.
Scott, did you have a question or comment?
We had personnel. We had two moves in personnel.
Okay, and that that will be on, we can get a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know that I got that. If you let uh Sandy email that.
With everyone, yes, sir.
All right.
I, we, I had, it was in our, it was. We, I had, it was, it was emailed to us in the packet.
Okay, then I didn't look far enough. I'm sorry. Thanks, Gigi. All right, let's, let me get a motion to make sure we do this official to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Sid.
By Mr. Hill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. I'm going to let you all raise your hands. I see enough to adjourn. And here's the, and there it is. Thank you all.
I think figure out how to get off here.